All to order. I'm the Chair Christine Vitale. Welcome, everybody. I'm sorry we started a few minutes, well, almost a half hour late. We had a special meeting before this. Present tonight are Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, Superintendent Cummings, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, and Ms. Kelly. Ask you to all please rise for pledge. And Mr. Cummings, will you do us the honors of leading us in your last pledge?
Before we go to public comment, I'm just going to ask the Board for your unanimous consent to move the superintendent's report up to just before our old business. We ran out of time. You know, we seem to be cutting, getting short with our meetings. I want to give Mr. Cummings the time to give his report without feeling rushed. Also, we've got some new information just about students that were higher performing in terms of their, their test scores that would have qualified for the Math Academy if we had had it. And I know that there were some questions about it, so I want to make sure we have time for that discussion before we potentially reach the 11 o'clock hour. So can I have the unanimous consent of the Board just to put that? Okay. Thank you. So with that, we'll go to the public. If there's any members of the public that would like to give public comment, I invite you to come forward. Seeing none, we'll go right to Mr. Cummings and your, your last superintendent's report. I really, I want to get your, can I get the balloons and just put them on the back of your chair?
All right. Good evening, everyone. My coming superintendent. I wanted to start, I, really, the superintendent's report tonight is an update on the Math Academy. And I, and I wrote a couple of thoughts up here that I, if you would indulge me for a minute, I want to make sure that I cover the ground here for everybody. So, excuse me. I am, want to begin with an apology to the Board for the wrong information that was initially presented on the number of students identified for advanced math ability. The initial number that I gave you was eight, and the actual number is, as we know now, is 46. The error was the result of errors in the data set culled from Infinite Campus. Some data that should have been interpreted as numerals was instead interpreted as letters and was not incorporated properly into the calculations. While the data was initially reviewed for errors, this, this issue was not identified. A parent alerted us to the problem when questioning why their child did not qualify. And again, I want to make everyone to understand that this error is unique to the issues this year. We did go back and check prior years. I, I recognize that the Board made a decision on erroneous information. It is our role to make sure the information you have is accurate and timely. We failed to meet those needs. As a result, you gave consent to move forward with notifying the initial eight families of placement and inviting them to an information session on the plan for the 22, 23 school year and the promise to continue to meet student needs in 23, 24. The identification of another 38 students has further budget and planning considerations that the Board had, than the Board, excuse me, had initially supported. I apologize for that. On June 14th, I provided you with our concerns for planning for 23, 24 for just those eight students, and the added students obviously amplifies those concerns, which I'm going to talk about in a minute. An initial information session was held for the eight families last week, and another session is planned for July 5th for the other identified students. All families have been given the option to elect a grade five math classroom placement for their grade four students next year. Currently, we do not have the final number of families accepting that option, and we will not have it until the end of next week after the Fourth of July weekend. I will tell you, though, of the original eight students who were notified, six of those students have accepted the placement. The Board will be updated in mid-July with that final number. Included in that update will be the number of students for school and the gender and ethnic breakdown of the final cohort. I should also point out that we have notified these families, we will notify these families, that in, as part of the support for students, which I'll get into in a second, the students at the end of the summer do need to pass an assessment. We wanted to make sure that they were ready to be placed in the fifth grade classrooms and not feel unsupported. They will be supported in instruction during the summer, but we want to make sure that, that students will not essentially fail in this placement. So that, that could have some further impact on the number before the start of the school year. Mr. Wakeman has identified a teacher to work with the students this summer. If the number of students is more than 25, we will have to identify a second teacher to support students. Support will begin the week of July 11th and consist of one two-hour in-class session per week and one hour of virtual office hours. And then if we have to, if there's more need, we would modify that. The plan for the 23, 24 school year, when these students are in grade five and ready for grade six math, has been justly criticized for a lack of clarity. I want to be clear that while we are supporting these students, we have been guided by a desire to minimize costs and an awareness that the specifics of our approach will be determined by the final number of students in the cohort. So one possibility I want to put in front of the Board tonight for your consideration, and this is not by any means the, the final one, but as I was thinking about this problem in light of the eight students, and then particularly in light of the 46 total students, this is one possibility that could be considered by the Board. The convert, you could, you could potentially convert, so I'm thinking now to the 23, 24 school year, when the current grade five Math Academy program comes to an end. You could convert that existing FTE, either fully or partially depending on the total enrollment of students, to support the students who by then will be in fifth grade classrooms but ready for grade six math. Depending on the total number of students that you have available at that time, you could create one, two, or even three cohorts that could be developed that teachers could support in a hybrid manner. So what the teacher could then do is travel, and I'm going to give you an example in a second, but the teacher could travel to different schools on different days, meet in person with members of that cohort that attend that school, but then other students in that same cohort that are in other schools would virtually attend the same instructional lesson. This way, the teacher would be able to provide every three, four days, in-person instruction to the students and then, and address their needs, but then in the next day be in different schools and again to address those needs. A challenge to this would be, the challenge I see to this is aligning grade five math instructional periods against, across different schools. And space in each school, spaces in each school might also need to be identified. And again, that would depend on the total number. But the, the approach, the benefit to this would be guarantee inconsistency of instruction to all of these students by the same teacher, keeping them at the same pacing through the course of the year. So if you were to take, and I'm not using the numbers in front of me right now, so, but if you were to take, let's say, a school that had three kids, a school that had four kids, a school that had five kids, that could be one of your cohorts. You'd want to make sure that of the total number of students, you were balancing them out. And again, the teacher might be in school A on Monday, school B Tuesday, school C on Wednesday, and then back in school A on, on Thursday and so forth. So this rotation would go into effect. For, for, essentially what would happen is you'd have to build in an hour, an hour, an hour, 10 minutes of math instruction for each of the cohorts plus travel time. So again, depending on the total number of kids, you might have a .5 FTE, you might have a 1.0 FTE, but you could do this with no, if you think, if all 46 students were to be part of it, you'd have three cohorts of roughly 15 kids each. That's, that's a full-time FTE with travel time and some planning time built in. And that would be, again, the conversion. And again, this is not what I'm saying has to be the final answer, but it's one possibility to deal with the issue. And I know that the Board has other considerations. I've heard a couple of them, and I think they're all bear, bear further conversation. I think that they, some of the alternatives that you're proposing really need to align with what the Board, how, how the Board wants to support these students. Well, the first question obviously is, does the Board want to continue to support these students in some manner going forward? But if the answer to that is yes, then there's other considerations that could go into place that Board members have proposed, including things like study, summer school, using summer school as, as one way to address these needs. So what I would recommend is, you know, and I'm in the uncomfortable, uncomfortable position of saying, well, I think this should happen, and I'll see, you'll let me know how it goes. I'll read about it in the paper. But I think what you could do is with the administration, you could ask the administration to essentially conduct research on these options to consider both costs and educational benefit, and then lining it up with what we've began to implement this year. As for a presentation in October as potential budget impact for the 23, 24 school year. So with that said, I'll answer any questions or hear comments and concerns.
Ms. Maxine Cannelly, follow-up on Ms. Kelly.
Thank you. First of all, I love the idea of the hybrid plan as a means of supporting those fifth graders with their sixth grade math. I think it carries with it the benefits of, first of all, if we did actually convert that fifth grade Math Academy teacher, this is someone who taught, would be pretty close to a seamless transition to something that would be a new, slightly different method. On the other hand, it also carries with it a lot of the benefits of the Math Academy as it currently exists of having those students, you know, be there as supports for one another. So there's a lot to that plan that I, you know, again, I, I do agree, and to Mrs. Vitale, I hope that we can plan on that for October as a, a presentation on what are these options going to be, but I do really like the sound of that hybrid plan. One question regarding the summer work for summer 2022. Are, is, is anything mandated for that students, or is the only thing that's mandated is passing the test?
We are, we are requesting that they attend the sessions. We recognize that, you know, some of these may conflict with vacation schedules and things, and that's why we put in the office hours to help keep, catch kids up. But we are really, there's no attendance requirement, but there is an expectation that you're going to be there and not take the test on the fly. And we want to be able to see kids in there and be able to support them, because while they, they have, through the assessment, demonstrated capability or ability, we also want to make sure that when they land in those fifth grade classrooms, they'll be successful. Successful.
No, and actually, that's where I very much appreciate the idea of the test. The point is you have to know your stuff, or, because this should not become a burden on the fifth grade teacher who's accepting these fourth graders in there. So I definitely support the test. I just acknowledge that we're giving very late notice to some families, and between vacations and camp commitments, I would hate for people to lose their deposits and other things, so I just wanted to check about that. And also just to confirm, how, how are we paying, how are we covering the costs of the summer work?
Thank you for asking that question. We've got two potential ways to do this. One is that we've budgeted for some curriculum work, we, you know, we sign up certain amounts of teachers, and if those, you know, inevitably, somebody can't do it for childcare commitments and things like that. So either out of the curriculum funding for that. There's also potentially some money in the ARPESR grants because it is related to student instruction and improvement.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Kelly?
First, I have a question about the potential proposal you have with the traveling fifth grade teacher. And I admit this is not my area of expertise, but does the state even recognize virtual instructional hours? Would that count?
It would. It would count.
I do feel the need to point out that we've just spent the better part of two years trying to get kids away from virtual and remote learning, so I'm not in love with the idea of reintroducing it. So there's that. But I guess since it would be an opt-in, that's that. I don't know if anybody else has any questions about the actual, what he, what Mike just presented, or, because I have a list of things I'd like to discuss.
Ms. Jacobson?
Follow-up. So 22, 23 school year K/8 is authorized for remote learning, not next year. My question, though, is just to clarify, to make sure I was following you, it would be, the teacher would be with their cohort of 15 alone, and then just stay in that building and do two more cohorts that day virtually? Like, there wouldn't be a time where they're together, hybrid and ver, like, in person and at the same time, right?
I don't think I followed you on the question. I'm sorry. The teacher, the teacher would potentially be in three different buildings on any given day.
The teacher will never be teaching a live person and a virtual person at the same time?
No, that would be an expectation that this would be a combined class.
They would be?
Yeah, yeah.
So unfortunately, the state just banned dual instruction.
Yeah, I, I know, and I think that we have to address that with the state, because I don't know how else that a model like this would work, given the size of the classes and the need for specialized instruction. I know, it's, it's going to be.
Okay, so I was thinking that this teacher would be with one cohort in person, and then would maybe just stay in that building and do the other two virtually, so they wouldn't be at the same time necessarily, right? Like, three separate classes almost.
We could look at that if we wanted to, you know, ideally, though.
Which would be okay.
That would be okay.
Combined, we might have a problem.
Right. I think that the combined, though, would be a better form of instruction, because it would, the teacher would be able to meet with kids every three days, three or four days. Yep. But yes, we would, that would be the fallback.
Ms. Kelly, the floor is still yours.
Okay, thank you. I have many issues with the proposal that's on the table, the one that we've currently gone to parents with, the suggestion that you just made on how, how to address the second year. I don't think anything I'm going to say right now is new, but I just think it bears saying again, given where we are in the process. My first issue is with the identification process of these students. For the better part of four years since it started, we have had a gender issue when it comes to identifying these students. I've sat on the other side of this table making that argument, and I will make it again on this side of the table, because I do think it's that important. Even people who came out in defense of the Math Academy agreed that the gender issue was a real issue, one that, as far as I can tell, I have not seen a presentation on anything that anyone in this district has done to address. Please correct me if I'm wrong. I have seen nothing. So I have a real problem with that. I also have some concerns. Yes, this last identification process between the eight kids and the 46 kids was a data error. I'm a little uncertain if that was based on one criteria, multiple criteria, but I have real concerns if it was one criteria, that that was the difference between identifying eight kids versus 46 kids. I think that's a huge red flag in that possibly the indicators that we're looking at are not the right ones, or too restrictive in some manner, way too heavily on another factor. I'm not sure. I don't pretend to be an expert on them, but that stands out to me as a huge problem. So right off the bat, I have a problem with who we are including and potentially excluding with this program. The second point I'd like to make is that this proposal that's on the table right now, in my opinion, creates more problems than it solves. I have looked back historically on the presentations that were given to this Board about the Math Academy. The Math Academy was born out of the idea of not wanting these children to skip sixth grade math when they go from fifth grade into seventh grade math. The solution to that problem was to accelerate math in the third and fourth grade. The problem wasn't, we needed to accelerate math in third and fourth grade. That was the solution to skipping sixth grade math. So in my mind, the problem on the table is still just skipping the sixth grade math and not the, I'm trying to reserve the, using air quotes on this, but the boredom of the third graders and fourth graders in their math class. That was not the problem. The problem was skipping sixth grade math. We are creating a problem of what to do in fifth grade, which we've heard sort of a solution here right now, which I'm not 100% in agreement with. We are creating a potential problem with class sizes, which based on the information you gave us already, if the two children in Dwight who are identified based on current enrollments decide to opt into this program, one of those fifth grade classes, I don't care that it's not for the whole day, but for their 60 or 70-minute block period of math, will have an additional child in that class. That is unfair to every other, to every other fifth grade, to the fifth grader sitting in that class. It is unfair to them that they should have to absorb, it's unfair to the teacher, and it's unfair to the other kids in that class to have to absorb another student. Again, I don't care that it's only for 60 or 70 minutes, because if it's okay for that one class, then we as a Board should look at the class sizes across the board. If it's okay to absorb one student in Dwight because of a Math Academy student, then it's okay to absorb one kid everywhere else, and maybe we can save enough money. It is unfair to make an exception for this program, in my opinion. We have seen no data or evidence, and I'm very disappointed right now that Mr. Wakeman's not here to defend this program. We have seen no data that accelerating the third or, in third grade is beneficial. To the contrary, we got a summary from the Board showing that there was statistically no difference between the kids who attended the Math Academy versus the kids who opted not to go who were identified. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the only benefit, the only place where they actually tested better that was even worth mentioning was on the Iowa test, which is, if, again, if Mr. Wakeman is here, it would have been lovely to ask him if that main difference is because the Iowa test actually tests on sixth grade material. I would expect the Math Academy kids to do better because they were actually exposed to it, where the other ones weren't. Everything else was statistically deadlocked. Therefore, based on what has been presented to the Board, I see no evidence that accelerating math in third and fourth grade makes a lick of difference, and again, is creating more problems than it is solving. Okay, I could go on, but I won't, because I've obviously made my point, I hope, but at the end of the day, I also keep hearing that we promised that we would do something. I don't remember promising anything. We said we were going to get rid of the Math Academy. We agreed to not support the Math Academy, and we would look into potential solutions. There is no way I would have promised to come up with a plan like this. No way. And I think it's embarrassing that we went forward with it. I think it's embarrassing that we never got a presentation from Wakeman to defend it or explain why he, our expert, thinks this is best practice or good practice, and we basically just got a memo with erroneous data, and we ran with it. It reminds me of the win period in the middle school block scheduling, where we said we were just going to wing it. We're going to put the win, win period in there. We don't know what it's going to look like. And then lo and behold, after further analysis, they decided it's not ready. It's okay to say we're not ready. It's okay to say we don't have a plan. It's okay. It's best practice. But here we are, plowing ahead with a haphazard plan with, again, creating more problems than it's worth. I've already sent an email to Mr. Cummings. I don't know now if is the time to present what I would like to see as a solution, but if anybody else has any, I could do that later. I don't know when in the process that should happen, but I've spoken long enough.
Mr. Asa, do you have a follow-up?
No, I have, I have my own set of questions, but based on what Ms. Kelly just said, and since a presentation or a proposal's been given, I have no problem waiting on my question to hear an idea from another Board member.
Does anybody else have any follow-up to Ms. Kelly's question or comments? I'm sorry. Okay, seeing none, you can go on.
Again, since I had, I've always looked at this as addressing the sixth grade problem, not the third and fourth grade problem. That was part of the solution, not the problem. I would genuinely like to see us offer the sixth grade math during the summer between fifth and sixth grade. Instead of having our third graders skip into fourth grade math or fifth grade math and fourth grade, I would much rather see it happen at the end of fifth grade. I would also like to see the criteria loosened pretty, I would like to ideally see it open to everybody. Everybody who thinks they're up to the task, everyone who thinks that they can do it. Let's give everybody a shot. Let's give everybody a look, okay? We are clearly misidentifying. We are clearly missing kids. There could be kids on the cusp missing this, you know, criteria by one or two points. I don't even know what a point would equate to. But I say we give everybody a shot, okay? Is everyone going to be able to do it? No. Are there people out there who immediately know, I'm just not a math person, this is not my thing? Absolutely. I think that's what should happen. I think there should be a test. It's not a guarantee. If you take this course, just like you were saying before, there's no guarantee. You have to show up, and you have to take in a test, a test to show that you have mastered the subject matter. If you, if we go through the regular identification process, like we have been doing for years, and you are already identified as someone who can skip into seventh grade math, you don't have to take the test, because you don't do anything different, but you can, and it's an option, and I think that's a great option, because otherwise, these kids are just given a math packet and said, see you in sixth grade. So I think it kills two birds with one stone. It doesn't create a fifth grade problem. We're not dealing with hybrid fifth grade instruction. Yes, does it come with a price tag? Absolutely. Could it potentially cost more than the program that is being presented right now? Maybe. And I think you all know that nobody likes to not spend money more than I do, okay? So I don't, I don't take this lightly, saying that, but I think we get the most bang for our buck. I think it is equitable, and I think it solves more problems than it's creating. And so that is what I would like to see us pursue, rather than the current plan.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Mr. Asa, it looked like you want to make a comment.
Are you done, Ms. Kelly? I didn't mean it like that. I just, I didn't want to go until you were, okay. So I have to digest what Ms. Kelly said as far as the suggestion, but I, I would like to say that I agree with, with most of what she said, leading up to that. I was watching the last meeting from home for personal reasons and was not able to be here and go on the record at that time. But what I have heard for a while now are hypothetical solutions down the road. And I don't believe we can move forward on plans that we don't know. While I hear and respect Mr. Cummings' idea here tonight, we've already, in a matter of minutes, known that it may or may not even fly the way it was presented with the state. And I just feel at this point, and I would have said this last time, the best course of action is to hit the pause button and continue to have the administration work and have these discussions on what is the best practice and move forward. Mrs. Maxine Cannelly has, has gone on the record adamantly, and I respect her, her viewpoints. I may not agree with them, and that is what we are all here to do, is to have, you know, civil debate on a topic. But I have not, I am yet to see an argument that sways me to move forward with anything, because I do not see a plan.
Mrs. Maxine Cannelly?
Thank you. And, and thank you, Ms. Kelly, because what I, one thing that I enormously respect in my fellow Board members is when you don't like something, you have an alternative as opposed to just saying, I don't like something. So I enormously appreciate that you had an idea, that you presented it to staff, and that you presented it to us. And now I'll explain why I don't like it. But again, I want to be very clear that I respect the, what, the path that you took. And I'll admit that if it weren't for Mrs. Kelly saying it, I would have forgotten the genesis of what we were trying to do with the Math Academy, that it was the issue of addressing the lack of math knowledge of sixth grade math when students skipped to seventh. I actually forgot that. But here's what I do know. One thing that the Math Academy exposed was a problem we didn't realize we had, and that was third graders who were so far exceeding the math capabilities or the math performance at that point in time of their peers as to be inappropriately educated, wasting their time and math time because they were so far beyond it. It was a problem we didn't know we had, or at least had not identified district-wide. And that is fundamentally why I can't agree with Mrs. Kelly's plan, because it would mean knowingly allowing these students to sit there, and I'm going to say, oh, but again, they're, they're getting the, the interaction with peers, which is always valuable, but they're getting no math education because they're so far beyond the curriculum of their grade. And we would be knowingly signing off on, sorry, you've got to sit there for two more full years before we can adequately accelerate you. And I'm coming from a place of, and again, I am the first to say that there is an awful lot about Fairfield Public Schools that I think is superior to the district where I work. But the district where I work has had two freshmen come in in the past decade who started at AP Calculus. And I am in awe of that capability of supporting that level of excellence in a specific subject. It's something I think we should all be striving for, of how can we meet students where they are and helping them to achieve their potential. And this is an entire, this is now two full classrooms full of students, 46 students. And I also do agree with Mrs. Kelly. And I also do agree with Mrs. Kelly that I bet you there are more who would benefit from this acceleration and to knowingly let them stew in two years' worth of math curriculum and waste their math potential, it, it's, to me, it is unconscionable. We can do, Fairfield Public Schools can do better to meet their needs and this is a need. Again, it was so eye-opening when we did the gifted and talented policy to learn that students in the, identified as gifted and talented have a PPT process. And it's a reminder that they are identified as exceptional learners and shame on us for not meeting that need. I also think that this is ultimately going to be a short-term fix because Mr. Cummings has referenced it and I enthusiastically support the idea that we really need an overhaul of our elementary school gifted and talented program. And I would like to see this skill work, this knowledge content work perhaps worked into that, although not strictly with a gifted and talented label because not all of these students will meet that label. So again, to recap, that is why I do not support waiting for sixth grade, not meeting the needs of these students for two years. We discovered a problem we did not know we had. The one part that Ms. Kelly said that I would be keenly interested in and maybe not for this year because it's, school is out, but for next year, loosening the reins on our identification process to a degree, we definitely have to examine our current criteria because I, again, none of the data from third grade, the SPAC information supports this type of a gender gap which comes out through this identification. So that's clearly something we've learned we need to look at. But that idea of loosening the reins a little bit and as, as, I think I'm quoting Ms. Kelly, giving them a shot, I actually really like that idea. So thank you.
Anybody else before I give Ms. Kelly the floor again?
Can I, this one will be much shorter. To the point about, you know, now we know, first of all, I could argue that we kind of created this problem by setting an expectation with the Math Academy that we will now start accelerating math in third and fourth grade, again, without any presentations about how that is developmentally appropriate, what are the benefits, have not seen anything about that, but that's neither here nor there. But to the, to, just to speak to the, to the point that Ms. Maxine Cannelly made about, you know, how we didn't know, I have to feel like we did know. I mean, these kids are standard, are taking standardized tests every year. Like shouldn't they be testing off the charts? Like what are we doing with these test results then? That if, like when we, I know when I'm reading my own kids' test, like scores, they're like, oh, they're in fifth grade, but they're reading at a seventh grade level. Like, do you get an equivalent of that with your math? Like you're in third grade, but you're at a sixth grade level. Like what are our math specialists or what are we as a district doing to address them? Like, were we not doing anything before? Like, I have to believe we knew that there were kids who were performing above grade level before the Math Academy.
So back in January, we had received this one pager that had to do with information about the Math Academy. Can everyone hear me okay? And, I mean, I hate to, to base so much of my feelings about Math Academy on this, on this data set, but we really haven't received much else. And when I look at this and I see that, and, and Mrs. Kelly alluded to this, that the growth between, you know, when we compare students that attended the Math Academy to students that did not but were invited, they had similar growth. So I don't know if I should interpret that as our teachers doing a really great job in the classroom to encourage this growth or maybe they're doing it outside. I mean, I, I don't know how to interpret that, but I don't feel like we're failing them because they're ending up in the same place. So, you know, I, I would like to hit the pause button on, on this project because I just think there are so many questions and we're creating, we are creating a lot of problems, really concerned about under identifying the number of girls invited to this program. I, I don't want to leave them behind. I don't want it to happen another year. I'm not comfortable with that. And in no way am I comfortable with a program that's focused on virtual instruction. I think it's, it sets us up for a really bad precedent to use that to solve other problems in the district and it's one that I'm, I'm not comfortable because of what I've seen happen over the past two years. So I guess I just would leave this with, you know, what I see is the great work that's happening in our elementary schools outside of the Math Academy and I hope that that can continue and that our math specialists can continue to work with these students that are, are exceeding the grade level expectations.
Mrs. Maxine Cannelly?
Just a couple of quick things. The one model of remote learning we had that was a wild success was the Remote Learning Academy. And so that if the hybrid option went away because we weren't allowed and it instead became a teacher did 60 minutes of Remote Learning Academy with a cohort, that's actually replicating something that was wildly successful and wildly popular. So that actually would be an improvement on it perhaps if we're not allowed with some occasional in-school support from the math, math science teacher of that individual school. But we do have a model out there that for 60 minutes of remote was incredibly successful. And again, I, I, and then I promise this is my last comment, but I would be horrified to go back to 46 families that have been notified of this possibility and say that the Fairfield Board of Education has decided to rescind this offer. We may not like it. We may not want it as the model for next year, but these kids have now been told about this. And I, the thought of now rescinding that horrifies me. Obviously lots of things horrify me, but that's, add one more to the list.
Ms. Kelly?
Sorry. Two things, if I could respond to that. I do agree that the feedback we got that the Remote Learning Academy was wildly successful and popular during a pandemic as, as opposed to what the alternatives could have been. I would just like to point that out. But, and then, I'm sorry, I lost my other train of thought. What was the other? Sorry, you just mentioned the RLA? Rescinding. So if I may anecdotally just say that in, when my daughter was placed in fourth grade, we got our teacher assignment the week before class started. She was all excited because she got Mr. Carr, hopefully he's listening, super excited. Two days later, we get an email that there was another class added, which was a good thing because she got another teacher, but you had to send the email. I'm sure you didn't like sending the email that your teacher assignment changed, but we did it. We do it and I think it takes a bigger person and a bigger board to say, we want to get this done right. We want to do it correctly and we want to present to you a full and comprehensive plan. And we prematurely went to them. I still flabbergasted how we, how we even got there. I really don't understand, but regardless, we did. But I tell my kids all the time, all the time, there is no shame in saying you made a mistake. There is no shame in saying we are not ready. And just to do something, to say we're doing something is not, is not the, the plan, I think, the course we should be taking.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Any other? Ms. Jacobson?
I'm just going to be brief. Couple of things. One is I'm a little frustrated with we still don't have a plan on both sides of the matter. It's been a number of years at this point, so I don't know how we don't have a plan. To be honest, I, I, I look at other districts and I see a lot of different options at elementary schools that we don't offer. So I'm definitely interested in diversifying the options available to our students, especially in light of curriculum policies we're about to pass right now tonight. So maybe this may not be the thing. Maybe something else is the thing. Maybe there's more than one thing, but I am hopeful that there is a thing that serves this need and whatever else our kids may need. So I know that we're kind of talking about the specifics of this one idea or another idea, but I'm just in the boat of meet kids' needs in a way that makes sense and that, you know, obviously is within reason in terms of we would have to understand and any budget implications, but, you know, we're not here to take opportunity away, in my opinion. So wherever there is an opportunity to offer more, I'm on board with making sure we can do that in the best way that we can for our kids. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Ms. Kelly, for, you know, offering a, a plan. You know, unfortunately, it's not an option for this year. I, I don't disagree in terms of this is not an ideal to move something forward. I think the frustration, my own personal frustration with the Math Academy is the timing of when we identify students, how many students we identify potentially impacts what the, what the program looks like, what the budget implication is. It has evolved since its inception, you know, when it was first introduced by a previous superintendent, it was, to be put at McKinley as a magnet program as a way of potentially drawing families from across the district into McKinley, more of an open enrollment. That changed. The one, I agree with Mrs. Maxine Cannelly in terms of rescinding the offer. We, we had eight students. We took a sense of the body and moving forward to judge, you know, notify those parents to being perfectly honest that this is where we are right now. You would go into fifth grade and we're working on a plan for sixth grade and left it, left it to parental choice. Mr. Cummings, you said six of the eight have already responded, they were interested in participating? I mean, I, I think that that is somewhat telling to me to miss, you know, I think you're both right, really. I mean, I think that, you know, we, you know, to some extent, I think you're both absolutely right that we are meeting the needs. We've had, you know, we've had these high-performing students for years. You know, we haven't really heard much about it, you know, needing to be accelerated. They thankfully are able to move forward in middle school, but we have offered new programming in terms of accelerate, providing more robust math instruction at an earlier age through the Math Academy. This board opted not to move the Math Academy forward for a variety of reasons. I don't want to revisit that discussion at this point. Right now, for next year, we're providing an option to meet the needs of these students and giving parents the option to opt-in. So I, is it perfect? Absolutely not. Could it be better? Absolutely. Is it frustrating that we didn't get more information earlier? Yes, but I, again, I think it's difficult when we don't identify students until the spring. Absolutely agree that we need to look at the, the criteria that we're using to identify. You know, test scores are a test score. You know, they're somewhat gender neutral when a student is taking a test. I think that maybe it needs to be more comprehensive in terms of student, teacher feedback, looking at it ideally earlier in the school year so we can plan accordingly, especially from a budget perspective. But I feel some comfort and know that there is a plan that would be, not be somewhat budget neutral in terms of not an ad utilizing the existing fifth grade Math Academy teacher. So that is where I am right now. I want to get the sense of the full board to see, you know, whether or not we are going to still provide this option to the 46 students that we identified. I'm not happy about the error that, you know, occurred that we made an assumption based on eight, but just because there's, there's more, I, I don't think that that necessarily should change the course that we're taking right now. Mr. Asa?
Well, you just mentioned a, a sense of the body, but I, I just wanted to say that the, the former sense of the body of the board to, to move forward with this is fundamentally flawed because it was based on erroneous information. So I just want to make that point and put it on record. And Mrs. Rotelli is not here tonight for reasons that are hers, but, you know, she has also indicated to me that, that her position has not changed. So I, I did tell her that I would put that on the record on her behalf. So, you know, with, with regard to the sense of the body and moving forward, I just wanted to say that the, the previous sense of the body is invalid, in my opinion.
What, it was, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly?
I just have to ask regarding, and, and there's, there's no question that I have a bias here, so that, that's out there. Exactly what is the power or weight behind this sense of the body? I mean, we have data change all the time. We support a budget and numbers change, assumptions change. Now, this was a colossal data change, no, no doubt about that. But what exactly is the power behind this sense of the body? This is a curriculum decision that our professionals have mapped a, charted a course forward that they are pursuing, that we approved with flawed data, no doubt about it, but the course has been set. And so I don't understand the purpose behind making us feel more positive. And again, I absolutely acknowledge my bias here, but I don't understand the power, the weight or the purpose of a sense of the body when this in fact is not a voting item. So I'm asking a procedural question here.
I wanted to follow this, we took a sense of the body last time and I think that in some extent, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, you asked board members for that sense of the body at the last meeting. So I feel that we just, and, and you did, and you, and you did. So wanted to, you know, see where everybody is right now. See where everybody is right now.
As a follow-up to Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, she actually raises a very good point and, and, you know, so, so I, I guess the question to, to the chair or to Mr. Cummings is, does, does a sense of the body make any difference here?
I would like the board to give guidance. No, it, no, it doesn't really. I guess it really, in terms of the action that the superintendent chooses to take, it is the action, it's the day-to-day. We are not changing the curriculum. It is really just best, how the best suit the needs of students based on, you know, those identified needs. So you're right, we really don't necessarily have to take a sense of the body. I wanted to give.
Well, because to that point, because Dr. Tracy is going to be taking over in a few days.
Absolutely.
And, you know, he, he is going to be taking over this procedure. So I just, you know, that's why I just wanted to be clear.
And wanted to put it to, brought it up for discussion at board members' request again. It really, we didn't need to talk about it again to the, the extent of a decision has been made, but wanted everybody to have a chance to, to share their thoughts. Anybody? So I, I guess we don't need a sense of the body. I guess you are, Ms. Kelly?
But just to Ms. Maxine Cannelly's point, she's right. We do change our minds, so I don't understand why this would be any different. If we decided as a body to change our mind on this, we do it. We can. We're well within our rights to do it. Is embarrassing? Yes. Does it stink? Yes. But is it the right thing to do, in my opinion? Yes. So for that reason, I think a sense of the, the body is important, but at the end of the day, if you're saying that it's, if it's the superintendent's call, then it's his call. Like, I don't know who's, clearly it's not the board's call if we don't have to vote on it. If it's Mike's call, he gets our feedback and he does with it what he will, what he wants, I guess. Just in case you didn't know, Mike, I don't want to do it.
Ms., Ms. Jacobson?
I, I'm just going to, I think we need to get on to the rest of the meeting, hopefully. I mean, but at, at the end of the day, look, we, we didn't support the Math Academy going forward and, and my working assumption from that was that these needs were going to be met in school. So I'm still under that same operating principle that was the rationale and background behind removing the Math Academy. So otherwise, we just kept the Math Academy, so.
And that was, I think that was the guidance that this board gave, that we wanted to meet the needs preferably in their home, in their homeschool. The challenge math period that was presented, we wanted something more robust. This is something robust. Is it perfect? No. Would I like, I, do I hope that Dr. Tracy and potentially the next superintendent brings other options to the table? Yes. Will we be asking for those options? Yes. In terms of the gifted and talented program that we, you know, we discussed at our last meeting as meeting these needs, would like to see that as well. Mr. Asa?
So then, you know, I, I think it's, it's clear what's going to happen, but just, you know. So then, you know, I think it's clear what's going to happen, but just, you know, for the record that, you know, I wasn't here at the last meeting, I stated my case here, or my opinion. Mrs. Guernsey had said to hit pause, I believe she was in support of moving forward when it was the eight students. If Mr. Peterson hasn't changed his stance, then it appears that the sense of the body did shift, you know. So that being said, we've discussed it, I'm ready to move on, but just, it's out there.
Mrs. Gerber?
Just out of curiosity, and Mr. Cummings, please feel no obligation to answer this question, but had the sense of the body been different at our last meeting, would the decision have been different at that time? Or would you have gone ahead with the plan that you had proposed to us that we had not voted on, that we did not vote on?
If the sense of the body at the last meeting had been different, then we probably would have stopped because we were making a two-year commitment. We went ahead, and now we're in a two-year commitment. I am by no means saying that the solution that, for this group of kids, is the solution going forward. I think that the, that the board has already offered ideas that are well worth exploring, and quite honestly, there's going to be, there's going to have to be, Ms. Maxine Cannelly raises this issue that is, you know, our parents and our kids have spoken to about the classroom environment. Ultimately, there has to be a decision that that either is something that we feel, the board feels that they need to sustain, or they're going to find a replica, some other way to approach that issue. I, again, I'll say it again, I think that the, once, at the June 4th meeting, when we thought, this is eight kids, and we can approach them in this way, that was a way to address this problem going forward, or I shouldn't call it a problem, this possibility going forward. I do think that whether it's eight or 46, that the solution, and I shared with you the numbers by school, while not ideal, still works for next year, and some solutions around those students will support, that we talked about even at last meeting, with, whether it's eight or 46, there is some, going to be some impact on FT, but there is always going to be some impact on FT for that, that, the year that they are in, fifth grade. So, again, and from an economy of scale point of view, and the distribution of kids across schools, I don't think that that's a, that that budget impact is that big or can't be absorbed in other ways. I will caution, as I did at the last meeting, I, because it just came up again tonight, the math science teachers are not available, going to be available in every school five hours a week to deliver instruction to this group of kids, whether it's 10 or three, just given the coaching needs that we have to do, as well as the intervention needs that they have, they have to do. The coaching that they're doing, and they're honestly not spending enough time on now because of the intervention needs, is the thing, is the lever that's going to raise the level of math instruction to better accommodate the number of kids. It's the proactive way to go forward. So I, no matter what solution that does come forward to you, I would, I won't have a voice, but I would caution against anything that takes their time. I do think there are possibilities around the Gifted and Talented, particularly given the changes in that, and the streams that that potentially starts to create. So I've given you more answers than you needed, I apologize.
Okay. All right, I think that we will move on. I think the public and the, so can we just make the decision at like, are you, is, this is it, it's happening? Or are we waiting? Is he, are we deciding? Are we letting Mr. Tracy decide? Or like, you're saying, we're going to stay the course? Like, is that the official, is that what we're doing?
Well, go ahead. No, I would say stay the course. I mean, the, Mr. Tracy begins on Friday, Dr. Tracy begins on Friday, the parent session has already been implemented or set up for July 5th, next, you know, after the long weekend. So if we. The second parent session, and with a due date, and we've set up the teacher and all those types of things. So I think to pull back on expectations for those six parents, families already, and then the other potential, you know, and I don't think it solves the immediate issue of what we have to do, with the immediate problem in front of us, so I would push it forward. And I'm going to make the call on that, unless the board tells me not to, and tells me to start taking time off now, because we have this deadline essentially for July 5th, and we're collecting names now. Parents are responding to our offices now with the invitation.
I'm sorry, unless the board tells you not to? I thought we just decided that we, the majority of the people at this table are not in favor.
Unless the board tells me to go away now, that's what I said. You could start your retirement now, that.
I'm sure you really would like, part of you really.
Hour ago would have been great.
Really, really would like me to.
Again, I don't want to make light of it. I can't say enough how badly I feel about the error, because it's bad enough, you know, to do this at any point, but at your last meeting, and your last, this is not how any of us wanted, I wanted it to end, and I, I just feel, you know, it was, it was a bad mistake, and we own it.
All right, so as, we're not going to take a sense of the body, this is not a voting item, we're going to let the superintendent run the day-to-day operations at the schools. So we are moving on to the approval of the 2022-2027 District Improvement Plan, the Board of Education approved the 2022-2027 District Improvement Plan. Can I have a motion? Ms. Jacobson, second and by Mrs. Gerber. Mr. Cummings, I don't know if you have any remarks that you want to make before we take it to the board for discussion?
No, I just, again, thank, I said this at the last discuss, and I just sincerely want to thank the board for their involvement in this process. You contributed to a better document, and as you go forward with it, I hope that it fulfills the expectations, because I do believe that the goals it sets, the key performance indicators it sets for student learning are going to be the levers that transform instruction across the district. The changes that will need to be happened will be in the action steps, as the board, you know, triannually really reviews that data to see that it's having an impact and doing what it's supposed to do. But, you know, I do think that the power lies in the plan with those targets to raise instruction and our achievement for every one of our kids. And again, I just want to thank the members of the steering committee who really contributed over the past, you really, if you think about it, three years, some of those folks worked on this plan, so, thank you.
Any, Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
So just through the chair to Mr. Cummings, I just want to thank you for all the emails and all the questions I submitted, and the answers that I got, and the subsequent follow-up questions I had, and et cetera. So I just want to thank you, because I know the time that I asked of you and staff to get to the bottom of this, and I just, I want to thank you for the work. I think I've finally really figured out the levels of this and how it's going to work, and I feel comfortable with it, and it did take this extra meeting for me to get to that. So I very much appreciate that we are voting on this tonight and did not, excuse me, previously. And I just want to especially commend one specific goal, I'm sorry my voice is going on me, but that goal regarding the grade-two reading, I'm not su, I know the community does not realize the ambition of that goal, and what it is going to take to accomplish, and how seismic that will be for the children of this district, but I just want to thank you for putting that goal out there and planning the initial steps for charting how we're going to achieve it. But I really just hope my fellow board members realize just how incredibly ambitious that is, and how important it is for our kids that we do have it as a goal. It's just, it's an astounding goal, and I am so grateful that, that, you know, everything in there is important, but that grade in particular really is important, and I commend you for not qualifying it. You know, there's no percentage on there, it is all, and I just want to thank you for that, because it is ambitious. So I don't know if anyone else had any comments, or if this, at this time, if I can make my motion, any timing?
I just want to second that in terms of the second, reading, all second graders reading at grade level, at the end of second grade, I, you know, that alone gets my vote. You can.
I gotta, I, thank you, and I would say this. Once the District Improvement Plan goes into effect, you vote on it, put it into effect, you know, like any, like any plan of worthy ambition, you're going to, you know this, I'm sorry, but I'm going to say it, you're going to hear when the numbers don't line up, right? You're going to hear reasons why they don't, and there's a lot of validity, I'm sure, to those reasons, because what you're talking about is, you're changing instructional practices, but really behind that or in front of that, you're changing culture, you're changing culture of expectation. I just would, you know, urge everyone to stay the course and not surrender on this stuff, because it's going to be difficult at first, and it may get ugly at first, quite honestly, because the pushback will come, but it's in those initial two, three years that the breakthrough will also come, as long as the course is stayed. And when people, when District Improvement Plans fail in their, they fail for two reasons. One, people stop paying attention, right? They take their eyes off of it, they, you know, the overused expression really is, it's your car dashboard, and you stop paying attention to it. You have to pay attention to the car dashboard, and that's why we built into the plan the board's oversight, the frequent oversight, reports back to the board, and I urge the board to continue to make time for that. But the second reason it fails is because politically, small P, people build alliances around why it doesn't work, and people push back on the changes that has to happen in their practices. And, look, we are where we are because people are teaching the way they're teaching, and people are leading the way they're leading. The only way it's going to change is people change the way they're teaching, people change the way they're leading, and the plan is designed to support that. So those are, those are my, those are my editorial comments.
Any other comments? Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to amend the 2022-2027 District Improvement Plan. Let me take a minute just to pass these out. I did send this to everybody in advance, just so you had time to ruminate over it, and as I said in the email, I did have conversation about this with Mr. Cummings, and so this ended up being, just waiting for it to pass along, okay, what I thought would be the middle ground, and so this, do I need to read the whole thing? Okay, so, so the motion is to amend the SEL and Equity Goal as follows. SEL and Equity, so this is on the Goals page. Establish a consistent, multi-tier student support structure and process to ensure consistency of intervention services through the district. Provide targeted SEL support for underserved populations to close opportunity gaps and reduce special education over identification of subgroups of students. And my motion is to add "and/or" "underperforming" after the word "underserved," so that it'll now read, "provide targeted SEL support for underserved and/or underperforming populations to close opportunity gaps." And that is my motion.
Can I have a second? Ms. Jacobson?
And so my, what I had some back and forth with Mr. Cummings on is that the reason I was uncomfortable at first at all with the word "underserved" is that I was looking for, because to me, that is pointing a finger at Fairfield Public Schools. We are, and I'm not saying that there isn't some validity to that, I'm not at all arguing that, but to me, to say "underserved" means we needed the data, we needed the quantifiable proof, so that we knew what we were addressing to no longer be underserving them. And so I was more comfortable with what I perceived as the more neutral "underperforming," because that, we had data behind. And so, I don't know if you mind if I speak to your point, and so Mr. Cummings felt that the word "underperforming," at least alone, sort of put the blame on the students, which was not my intention, but I see, I definitely see that point, and that is why I wish for both of them to be here. Underserved and/or underperforming, we know that students in, by subgroup, and maybe overall in some cases, are underperforming. I do think that there are student behaviors that need to change, but I think the district needs to support that change, and where the district is in fact underserving them, we need to, you know, look with a new eye. I mean, Mr. Cummings just gave a perfect example in terms of our approach to literacy, you know, that there are instructional practices, perhaps materials being used, which are contributing to this underperforming due to being underserved. And I hope that all makes sense, but that is the rationale behind my motion.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll take it to the public for a vote. Seeing none. All in favor of the amendment. Motion carries eight-zero. Back to the main motion as amended. Any discussion or comments on the District Improvement Plan as amended? Seeing none, to the public for a vote. Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. All in favor? Motion carries eight-zero. Thank you, Mr. Cummings, and thank you to Ms. Kelly and Ms. Guernsey for representing the board on the DIP Committee. Thank you to those parents that volunteered through a pandemic, over, you know, the stopping and the starting, appreciate your feedback. Thank to all the teachers and staff that worked on this plan. Thank you for your efforts, and I'm looking forward to beginning to implementing it and seeing it in action. Okay, moving along to adoption of policy 6141, advanced course or program and challenging curriculum. The Board of Education adopt policy 6141, advanced course or program and challenging curriculum. Can I have a motion? Ms. Maxine Cannelly, a second. Ms. Guernsey, Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
I received no questions on this, so I don't believe there's anything else I need to speak to.
Any comments or questions for Mrs. Maxine Cannelly at this point? Okay, Ms. Kelly?
Does the new Math Academy program or the equivalent of it fall under this challenge curriculum, or is this high school only?
This is geared towards secondary. We had a lot of conversation and used language regarding setting out our sights for a rigorous curriculum throughout, but this was geared at the state level more toward what's leading to, so this is, the elementary school, yes, in terms of the foundation, absolutely, and that's where I think one of the data points we're going to need to follow is the subgroups as represented in this accelerated approach to elementary school math. So in that regard, I guess I would say yes, although it's not explicitly in here.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, take, oh, go ahead, Ms. Jacobson, it's fine.
Something off the top of my head, it's not something I really talked about in policy, but just, you know, I think this will have some impact on our counselors at both middle and high, and it's not something in policy that we would have necessarily addressed because it's policy-driven from the state, but just, no need to comment on that, but just leave you with the thoughts that I hope that they become well-versed in anything we can do to support the implementation of that, so, thank you.
Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
And to Ms. Kelly's point and to Mrs. Jacobson's point, where the Policy Committee was very committed was in the last sentence of that first paragraph, which is, "The all students will be provided an opportunity to participate in a rigorous and academically challenging curriculum." We didn't have to have that sentence, but we thought it was important so that while this one had the secondary focus, we as Fairfield Public Schools can do better. And that was a lot, a large part of what the reasoning was behind having that sentence there.
Okay, seeing no further hands up, we'll take it to the public. Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor? Motion carries eight-zero. Moving on, adoption of policy 6172.1, gifted and talented students at the Board of Education adopt policy 6172.1, gifted and talented students. Can I have a motion? Ms. Maxine Cannelly, second. Mr. Peterson? Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
I guess, so I hope everyone did notice that you got the redline version for this policy. The previous draft had been, what is that, two sentences? And so, and yet, with all of the additional verbiage, there isn't a whole lot of substance that changes, it's going to be what we do with this that changes. You know, there is the added reference to talented, and that's something that we as a district are going to need to discuss, but otherwise, you know, again, I received no questions on it, but I did want to get you that redline version.
Any questions now? Comments? Seeing none to the public. Seeing none. Back to the board for a vote. All in favor? Motion carries eight-zero. Moving on, adoption of policy 5118, non-resident school attendance at the Board of Education adopt policy 5118. At the Board of Education, adopt policy 5118, non-resident school attendance. Can I have a motion? Ms. Maxine Cannelly, a second. Mr. Peterson? Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
So again, this is as, this was definitely a sense of the body in terms of our proceeding with this new policy for grades six through 12 only. And that was something which the, we received that feedback loud and clear. And so when we were in policy, we focused our discussion solely on that. Once again, you did get the redline version for this one. This one had a more robust policy previously. So I think, I don't think that the changes that were pertinent to the non-tuition situation are all that noteworthy, but of course, if there's a question, happy to answer it at this time. You know, truly, the substantive change to this is the notion that our staff members could become, who are not residents, can now have, could if we pass this policy, could now have their children enroll for a tuition basis. I, once again, did not receive any questions aside from one, but I'll leave that to the person to ask for himself. And so I'll just open it up to the board.
Mr. Asa?
Okay, so with regard to this, skipping ahead to the children of non-resident employees, that's my focus here. And, you know, this had come up a while back, and I was intrigued by this idea from a retention, a goodwill standpoint. But one thing that I had said from the beginning was that I believed that a tuition need to be placed on this at or close to our per pupil expense. And I would say through the chair or policy chair to the finance committee chair, if Mr. Peterson or anyone on the finance committee, because I believe you guys looked at the tuition aspect of this, could comment on, one, why we chose 35% of that number. And then, two, this may be for Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, just a clarification, and I believe the intent and the wording in here, but I just want confirmation from the administration, that with regard to the costs of, let's say, excess costs for programs and services provided beyond the general education curriculum, I want it to be on record that that is a starting point of zero. That none of the tuition would go towards any of these excess costs. That to start, they pay the tuition, and if there are any excess costs in excess of what would normally be the general education, that those would be covered by the employee.
Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
Okay, thank you. So again, just to clarify the 35%, which I will happily defer to Mr. Peterson to address, that was the one component of this, both policy and regs, that policy very quickly figured out was really, I'm going to say not our purview, not our area of expertise, and not as much our area of interest. We were happy to defer on this to the finance committee, who would work with the staff that were needed for that. So we, once we deferred that to finance, we didn't have a lot of discussion about it. And when finance came to their decision and brought it back to us, what came back is what appears now here before you. So they were comfortable with it, so we were comfortable with it. So again, I'll let Mr. Peterson speak to that. Regarding your second question, so the language that Mr. Asa is referencing is at the bottom of page D, in the red there. And so that, "When a student is accepted into or already has a PPT-determined special education program, the additional tuition cost will be the total of any excess costs for programs and services provided beyond the general education curriculum." So I would say that the policy committee's understanding is the same as yours, Mr. Asa, which is that is at a starting point of zero. And just for the clarification to the board, that makes this different than what we do with our open choice students. So open choice up to 3,000, we don't charge, and then beyond that, it goes to the home district. This is different from that. So thank you for asking that and giving us a chance to clarify.
If I can step in for our, represent our policy, our finance committee discussion. I'll let Mr. Asa finish what he's doing. Sorry, didn't mean to jump in there. The finance committee had a robust discussion about the percentage. And also that it should be applied to a broader base of school expenses than what was first proposed to us. We felt mostly everything that would qualify as a school expense should qualify as a base to apply that percentage to. I will say that we had a split opinion between the three of us on the finance committee. There were members among us who wanted a lower amount, members among us who wanted a higher percentage. We realized that we were going into a little bit of uncharted territory because, as you mentioned, this is also a recruitment and retention tool. And it's difficult to measure how effective it would be in that capacity kind of de novo. We don't have any basis for judgment. So how do we decide what our initial mark was going to be? And what I had done was I had reviewed a lot of, well, the ones that I could find, policies of other districts that had a specific percentage listed. And the vast majority I found were between 20 and 50%. 35% happens to be in the middle of those ranges. It's not a scientific study, but a, you know, an informal survey, but 35% is not out of the realm either to the high or to the low of competing districts in Connecticut. And so that seemed like a good starting point, given that, again, what we're trying to do is primarily retention and recruitment, and not as a, not as a revenue generator, but as a personnel matter. So that was our, that was our thinking.
Okay, so when you looked at those other districts and you found that 20 to 50% range, did you make that calculation on what they were a percentage of to see where that lied? And was, how did that look? Because 20 to 50% could be, is broad, but did they all wind up in generally the same amount based on the different per pupil expenditures?
My recollection is that, is that the way, in cases where that information was available to me, there were a range of different computational methods. So there was no standard method for figuring out the base. Like that was largely our discussion, that we wanted a broader base.
So we never actually went to those districts, made a call, and were like, hey, what do you charge your staff to bring the kids?
No, we didn't do that. But in, again, in the vast majority of these cases, there, the guidance was, the administration, either the administration would set this every year, or the board ultimately would vote on it every year. So, you know, some variability in what the actual numbers would have been.
And you're probably the right person to ask on this whether it's a voting item or not, but wouldn't a tuition amount be a voting item on an annual basis?
Well, I asked in, when this policy was brought to us, whether, just to be explicit, that the policy committee did not view this as something that would be annually, annually approvable by the board. I, my understanding would be, it would be a budgetary matter. We would vote on it indirectly in the annual budget. It would be information that we would, you know, have the right to receive from the superintendent, from the administration, but not that we would necessarily need to approve a tuition level every year.
So we would only vote on it when it's, the board wants to change it?
If the board wanted to change it and take over responsibility for that, we could propose that to the policy committee, policy committee come up with a policy for that. We could vote that into practice. But currently, the formulation has it as an administrative reg and would be under the purview of the administration.
So, Mr. Cummings, with, for example, students from out of district wanting to come to Walter Fitzgerald, is that tuition set in an administrative reg? Or is, I honestly don't remember. I remember talking about this in the past, but I don't remember whether we voted on that tuition number or not.
Yes, I believe did vote. I'm going to go back to my very beginnings in Fairfield. I think you did vote on that number, that specific number.
Okay, I just, because-
My recollection was that we voted on a policy amendment in order to allow us to charge tuition, not on a specific amount.
And my recollection is that we voted on an amount. So again, I could be totally wrong, but I thought I remembered voting on a specific amount that we have continued with up to this point. Look, the point is, because this becomes a potential budgetary issue, I think this tuition needs to lie with the board. And the tuition should be voted on. Again, I could be wrong and out of line here, but that's my feeling. And the other feeling I have is that when looking at other districts that have a 20 to 50% range, and we're starting at 35, we're starting at 35 and we're only going there or down, most likely. Because I can't see us, I mean, we could raise it down the road, but realistically, the, if the basis of that percentage calculation goes up, so does the tuition, right? But for me, I was kind of hoping that we would go a little higher and then see how it goes. And if we did have interest, gauge it, let it flow through, let it see how it worked, give it a couple of years, and then if we needed to and felt comfortable, we could reduce it. But those are my own, you know, hesitations, and I just, I appreciate the answers from both of you. Thank you.
I just, I will add, as I mentioned, there are policies in other districts that do have board approval being necessary for the specific tuition amount. So if you wanted to propose something like that, we could consider it.
Mrs. Maxine Cannelly?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, how we, because we definitely discussed that at length. And one sentence we did add on page E is that any change in the administrative regs will first be brought to the policy committee. And not because we felt that we had to police our administration, but so that there was, you know, no change that we weren't in a position to immediately inform the full board of. And so that we did put in. But regarding an annual vote, that was something that we wanted to be able to declare loud and clear, and it would be as by virtue of our January vote. And that's where, you know, we appreciated the, all of the detail for the calculation of that tuition amount. The point being, if the percentage doesn't change, there's no subjectivity to this tuition number. You know, it is determined by these budget line items, so when we approve those budget line items, we come up with that bottom-line tuition number. So in effect, the board is voting on it every year, and that's why we felt comfortable not having that. We are getting an annual report on how many tuition students we have. We did think that was important because that wasn't a given with the policy as it is. But it's part of our January process. You know, maybe what we want to ask as part of the budget process is, could it be indicated within the budget manual, this indicates a tuition amount of blank? And so that we're informed of that through the budget process. That was our thinking for not including that as a stipulation.
Yeah, and I'm okay with that. And I wasn't advocating for an annual vote. My feeling was when it's time for a change, that the board is involved in that change. So maybe three years from now, there's a change in the percentage, or five years from now at that time. But with doing it with the budget time, that wraps it in. I understand that. I just have a problem with the 35%.
Ms. Kelly?
Just, because we talked about it, but it will not surprise you that I was the one who was thinking the number should also be higher. So what got me to be at least comfortable with the number was that I did treat it as a, kind of like an employee benefit, if you will. We would be kidding ourselves if we treated this as a revenue generating item. Like it's a, it's a nice thing to have something rather than nothing, but, you know, we're not going to break the bank on tuition here. So for, like, for those reasons, I could get comfortable with the 35%, but I was, I was originally looking at a much higher number. And I started looking at the calculations and was like, I was comfortable carving out transportation because they wouldn't be eligible for transportation. I was comfortable carving out certain things, but then I started realizing we were kind of getting into like, à la carte education here. Like, well, if it's a girl, they won't be playing football, or maybe they will, you know? So I, we would, like, it just wasn't, I just, I got comfortable, I got there, but I would happily have taken more.
Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
And just one of the one point I want to add, as we're talking about these other districts, I also want to make reference, and I apologize that I, I can't put my hand on the list that I put together of just how many districts offer this as, and I'm going to say this, as a perk to their staff. We are absolutely an outlier in not offering this. Certainly across DURG A and DURG B, certainly across Fairfield County and beyond. So this is, you know, again, I'm very enthusiastic about bringing this to Fairfield.
Mr. Peterson?
Just to add to that, you know, in my thinking about the current state of the job market and difficulties we've had hiring recently, I, that's why I felt comfortable with a lower number. I might have come in with a higher number, except for the fact that I saw this as an absolute benefit for recruitment and retention. And it's a deal. It's a deal for people coming in. So I'm hopeful it'll be a very attractive benefit.
Ms. Asa?
So, and, you know, while I'm going on the record of saying I'm not happy with the 35% number, these other points that were made and the fact that this is a benefit and a retention tool for our staff, I will be supporting this policy. But I also just want to make one other point, and I know the board had given this guidance, I think to policy or whatever, but I do appreciate the fact that it was, that it was just six through 12. So thank you for not including, while I would love to include the elementary teachers in here, honestly, especially from, you know, a parent of elementary kids and wanting our teachers to have their kids here, I do see the potential logistical issues that that could cause, where it could cause class sections to go over potentially one year, not the other, and then we get a kid in here and then tell them they can't bring them the next year. And I don't think we'll have that issue as much at the secondary level. So thank you.
And just to specify, unless I'm missing a late change, superintendent has the ultimate decision about whether somebody is going to be enrolled from year to year.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, you can.
Thank you, everybody. And I just want to add, I mentioned at the last meeting that we already are aware of some interest among staff, so Ms. Laborius has prepared a memo to staff along with a form that we can send out after the board's passage of this, if the board passes this, that we can begin to get some initial interest from families for this fall.
Any other discussion? Take it to the public. Still no public. Back to the board for a vote. All in favor? Motion carries eight-zero. Okay, moving on. Financial report and approval of budget transfers for the 2021-2022 school year. Ms. Laborius, come on up. Recommend a motion, the Board of Education, approve the line item transfers for the 2021-2022 fiscal year as detailed in the enclosed financial statement.
Thank you.
Motion? Sorry. Mr. Peterson, second by Ms. Maxine Cannelly. On the table, the floor is yours, Ms. Laborius.
Thank you, Mrs. Vitale. I'm just going to pass out. I apologize, but I have an updated backup document from what was sent out yesterday. So I'll give you a moment just to look that over because I do apologize, that's an update. And then I'll just explain what changed in a moment. So what you're seeing is a recapitulation of the Q3 balance results, the Q4 preliminary, the spend-out summary, and the Q4 proposed balance. The transfers appear at the end, which matches what you have in your board packet as part of attachment. Let me look at the number. In closure number one, and it's page two, just after the memo, you can see that column F is summing the transfers. Does that make sense? And so these transfers include what we discussed at our last board meeting, which includes the Ludlow and Ward uniforms, which we had a question, were those part of the budget or the waterfall? No, these are in addition. And then the, it includes- And then it includes also the security items that we discussed, so building hardening and the intercom upgrades. And in addition, it also includes, because we can do this with our spend-out as we finalize the numbers, some of the IT items. So the assumption is that our Q4 balance, were the board to approve these spend-out items, would be $75,000. Again, as we discussed at the last board meeting, we did put in, from the feedback of the body, for the athletic uniforms as well as for the security items. And the IT items, we did issue the requisitions, but we're holding them pending the decision of the board this evening. And one other item that is here as well is the maintenance HVAC cleaning, that's duct work cleaning for $100,000. It's part of our normal spend-out at year-end. We're showing that to you here, because it is above and beyond what was budgeted this year. We had one school budgeted. Typically, in the year-end spend-out, we do add additional schools, because it is a best practice to do them on a faster cycle than what we had budgeted. So this is showing two additional schools to be able to do the duct cleaning at this end of school year.
Ms. Teresa.
I know Mr. Papa George isn't here, but why, if this is a best practice, why aren't we budgeting for it?
It's a good question. We had had that in the budget in the past for more schools. I think we had up to four, and it was part of budget reductions that brought it down to one school. I believe typically, he does utilize spend-out to do the additional duct cleaning, and then refines the schedule based on that.
But correct me if I'm wrong, this $100,000 is new since the last June 14th reveal, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So, I mean, okay.
So it's new, because as we're coming closer to the close, all of the payrolls have processed, most of the purchase orders have been adjusted, and so we're more comfortable with our total spend-out number, and our total surplus number, balance number. And so as a result, he's operationalizing many of the things that he typically does at year-end. It's just that I'm showing that here, because...
So I calculate a difference here of $111,864 between what was given to us yesterday and what was given us today. And on, this has obviously not all been spent yet.
Correct.
So I know that there were some back-and-forths on certain things getting approved, and I know that the board at the last meeting gave a sense that they wanted to cover, you know, certain things. What on this new, updated list is part of this 111-864?
Oh, yeah, thank you. So what is new is the rest of the IT items. So if you look at the list that you were provided before, it included the athletic uniforms, the security intercom upgrades, the building hardening, the HVAC maintenance, and three of the IT projects. What I realized is that I neglected to include the rest of the IT projects, and so, and also needed to re-categorize a few of the items. So for example, in support expense, that $39,450 is, I'm sorry, part of school expense, because that's coming out of the school line. So in the spend-out, the first line, the $159,959 is actually support expense. So I classified it in the support expense, that's security building hardening, but it's classified in support expense. So I made that correction. Maintenance operations and transportation originally had the $100,000, but it should have been the $167,504. So if you look at the bottom part of the detail, you can see that what was added is the, before, we just had projectors and interactive displays. This includes monitors, the pair educator software, and the servers. So as far as dollar items, those are the three that were added.
Sorry, I'm just using a calculator here really quick.
And the interactive displays went down.
Yes, correct. She added different pricing, so that went down. There were some minor adjustments as we got the purchase orders in, or the requisitions, the quotes in. There was a very, very minor adjustment to the athletic uniform total amount. And I think that's it.
Ms. Kelly, followed by Mr. Peterson.
I just want to say, I will have more questions. I'm doing calculations, so I do release the floor, but please come back to me.
Just following Mr. Asa's line of questioning there, in the comparisons of before and after, I know the additional amount was only $111, but when I reconcile the spend-out versus the prioritized list that we got, it looks like we did everything in the maintenance security, except for the window coverings at North Strafield. So with that extra money, I know it's not enough to cover this $139. I'm not sure why we skipped then down to technology and added those. If these were in priority order, why did we skip the window coverings?
The window coverings are here. They're part of the building hardening?
Building hardening was a separate line on this for $169,491, and then underneath that was window coverings for $139,724.
Oh, I apologize. It is in the total Q4 prelim. It's accounted for, I just didn't put it in the spend-out column. Essentially, the logic was, if you have a positive amount, you know, you're approving the transfers based on the fact that these would go negative. So I'm just showing you the items that you would have determination on today, based on, you know, the rules about needing to approve the transfers.
I'm sorry, you might have to explain that to me one more time, just because all the other things, the intercom upgrades, all those things seem to be a line item. I'm not sure why this one line item appears on this page to have been skipped, but I guess lumped up here. I don't know why the others wouldn't also be lumped up there.
I believe that is the building hardening. Window coverings for North Elementary?
Can I just?
Sure.
I would just question, anything for security that we do not really publicly discuss? If we need to go into executive session to discuss it, we can, but we really...
So, yes, she's showing me a different version of this document, and the building hardening and the window coverings are both accounted for in this budget. It's just not being shown to you as part of the spend-out, but it is in the Q4 preliminary balances. Does that make sense?
It actually does not, but I guess I have to trust you. I'm sorry. It just doesn't make sense to me why some would be and some wouldn't. It doesn't, I don't get it.
So everything has been procured to date. So in order to get to that $75,000 number, which is what is the projected Q4 balance, after all of this spending has taken place, so including, it includes the window coverings and all of the items identified here. So it's in the Q4 preliminary, because all of those requisitions had been submitted. This is just a subset. So, because my, what I heard from the board at our last meeting was, you were approving all of the security items as well as the uniforms. And so we went ahead and put those in to, in order to get them in time. In addition to that, we've identified HVAC cleaning and all of these IT items. The IT items have been changed slightly from what was on your list from 6-7, I think that was the date that that went out, because of pricing, and also prioritization. So the things that we have say-so on today are those IT items, which are totaling $292-281 in the capital line. The rest of everything has already been purchased and ordered based on what we talked about in the last meeting.
So can you elaborate on that last comment? So what I'm hearing, everything on here, except those items, the $70,000, $159, the 12-811, and the 28-894, have been expended?
Everything except for the interactive displays, monitors, pair educator software, projector installation, projectors, and servers. So the capital line totaling $292-281.
Wait, wait, hold on. Interactive displays, I thought, were part of the original plan.
Part, in the original plan, the board had paused on all of the IT items. So because of the timing, because today's the 28th, we did put those requisitions into the system, but we have not issued those purchase orders yet. Everything else related to security and athletics have already occurred, so those...
So I guess my question should be, what is in the system, or what isn't in the system, that has not been approved by the town, knowing that it is June 28th, and there is a likelihood that it may not get approved? So what I don't want to have happen is us go into a situation where we think that we can spend this money, if it's going to go back to the town, let's send it back to the town.
Every one of these items is in the system. Everything I'm identifying here is currently in the system and approved by the town as of Thursday. Every one of these has been sent out as a purchase order, with the exception of the IT items, which are listed, IT, starting with IT interactive displays, ending with IT servers, the total of which is the sum of the spend-out on the capital line, it's $292-281.
Okay, so everything is ready to go, you just need to pull the trigger?
Everything is ready to go. The trigger has been pulled, we just need to mail out the contracts if the board is in approval of those purchases for IT.
Okay, so they're being accrued for, then?
They are being, yes, because we wouldn't have gotten billed for them yet. Correct, yes.
Okay. So how long do we have, per whatever policy is in place with purchasing and finance, that we need to actually receive the goods and send the check to the vendor before it goes into next fiscal year?
So you don't have to have sent the check. You set up an accrual, and when the bill is received, then you send the check when you have the accrual. And these items will all be started tomorrow. Nancy is on vacation, but her staff is ready to go. All of the other items have started and are in process, and we do anticipate receiving them on the 30th or as soon thereafter as possible, based on, you know, our supply chain issues. We did issue a lot of the purchase orders in early June, and a lot of them, we had some delays on getting approval, but that's understandable, because there was larger scrutiny on these items. So we have every expectation that if the board approves tonight, that we would be able to get the projects started tomorrow.
Okay, so I guess the answer to the question of how long can you accrue is indefinitely?
An accrual, well, it's an audited procedure, so when you set up an accrual, you expect that when you do a payment in the month of July, it's an automatic chargeback, it belongs to the previous year. When it happens after that time, it's a manual thing that happens with the auditor, so the accrual is still there. The expense is accounted for in the current fiscal year, meaning FY '21-'22, but you have to do a manual adjustment through, with the auditors, to be able to make that expense go back to the date in which it occurred. So it's normal procedure. We renew them, we review them on a quarterly basis, and in conjunction with the town, and we make adjustments to the previous year accruals if, for example, the bill doesn't come to fruition.
And if that happens, then what happens?
So when that happens, that money does go back to the town, and it's accounted for in the audited financial statement. So we do currently have some things that are outstanding for two years, per the auditor's recommendation, for example. We had something that was outstanding for three years, that we made some recommendation to clean up the books and to write it off, and so the auditors agreed with us on that. So for example, a tuition revenue receivable, you know, that's like an accrual, it's a revenue accrual from a previous year. All of that is audited and part of the financial books. So also bills that we would expect to receive, so for example, a settlement agreement, a parent has the right to submit their receipts to us for a period of time, so we're required to keep that open. So even if, for example, the service for a settlement agreement belonged to this fiscal year, the parent hasn't yet submitted their receipts to us, we do keep that accrual open to fulfill our obligation to reimburse them.
And was it last year or the year before? I can't, I think it was last year. You weren't here last year, right?
I was here for the close, so I came in August, so I was here for that funding.
So last year, after all was said and done, I believe there was a couple hundred thousand dollars found after the fact, that wound up going back to the town, correct?
It was like $110, I believe, and it had to do with the transportation bill that was overaccrued, or not overaccrued, let me just state it this way. When we give you this Q4 projection today, this is our best estimate as of today, based on working pretty assiduously with all of the staff that are responsible at the different departments for making sure their billings are correct, getting them in on time, issuing their last purchase orders if they had any final end-of-year purchases. That said, that as we finalize and close them out, some things do come up a little bit different within the next month, and it is, you know, standard practice. Last year, I do believe that Ms. Muncell found, after she presented the Q4 results, they were to the good of about an extra $100,000, $110, and it was for transportation bills they anticipated that didn't come in. And we did end up giving that money back to the town. That's correct. So this is a preliminary estimate also, I just, I need to say, we could still have additional funds, and we likely will. People haven't taken down their full purchase orders to, you know, for example, transportation. It was an odd year for transportation, challenging to predict what the special ed bus runs would be based on driver availability, although our general contract is more sort of lock stop, we pay by bus, so it's a little bit easier to project. The special ed wasn't as easy. So there is a chance, when he finalizes all the billing, that there will be a little bit of additional money. Right now, he's accruing or setting up, he has an encumbrance that's outstanding for an amount that he believes to be the basis for what he'll have for bills.
Okay, yeah, and to that point, I mean, I know we've run less routes this year. I believe we've talked about a couple less routes, and, you know, I'm sure that equated to some savings. But, you know, so, I mean, obviously, anytime we can have savings in something like that, that's great. So I just, I was curious if you knew of anything, like, for example, that is that potentially? I mean, I know we're not going to spend it tonight, but I think it's important to know, and for the public to know, that there likely is, while we're allocating $75,000 on this recommendation, that it likely may be more, that eventually does, I guess, go back to the general fund.
Yes, that's correct. There could be, I don't know that it would, how you've handled in the past, I would follow past practice. There will likely be more additional adjustments that won't land exactly on this $75,000 number, but I can assure you, it'd be pretty close.
So that being said, knowing that there may be other transfers needed, and the board is to vote on certain sized transactions and transfers, should we anticipate having to do that over the summer, or would that carry into the fall, and then we would make a vote at that time if needed be?
So, yeah, it's a really good question. I followed the past practice, so in the memo that I saw from what, I guess, the previous executive director had issued, "The proposed budget transfers are in accordance with the BOE policy and based on current projected balances," and she wrote, "As is past practice, we will continue to process transactions for year-end, and if necessary, additional funds will be transferred and reported to the board in the fall." So that was past practice, so that's what we're following. But I do, that will happen at year-end. I'm hoping that we'll be able to come really close to the categories that we have now, because we've done such diligence on the year-end. The transfers right now would be recommended, not necessarily voted on, because I don't know that the timing lines up. I'm trying to think. Yeah, in the past, you hadn't voted on them. It was reported out as part of the close, the official close report. If you'd like to, I can have them voted on. That said, I just don't know...
Well, it's not that I want to. We have a policy in place, so if the policy, if it falls in the policy, then we do. I was just curious if that's something we have to do over the summer, or we can do it in the fall. It sounds like whatever happens can happen in the fall.
You hadn't done it in the past, so I know you have a policy. You're never going to land exactly on this number, so we should think of something going forward that will satisfy, you know, the need to meet the policy requirement, and be practical, because we do end right now, but the fiscal year goes on for us, and we don't close till August.
Well, and I appreciate your work with the Finance Committee and I would just encourage you, if you think that a past practice isn't good, that we shift gears and move to something if it's reasonable, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
If I could just add, at various points, we've had light discussions about policy 3170. And, and the difference between the strict letter of the law in that policy and the past practice, and there is a gap, and at some point, I feel that we might need to address that, but that is a large, a large issue.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. And we had, just, you basically said what I was going to say, we've been having these discussions and it will be, you know, discussions with Ms. Laborius. She was, you know, open to working with the Policy Committee, but we, this has been the past practice of the district and for this fiscal year, we are just following the past practice. So thank you for getting us these numbers. Ms. Kelly, do you have your hand up? Sorry, real quick. Miss Kerensky, I'm sorry. Oh. Go ahead, Miss Kerensky.
It was a new question, is that okay? It's a new question, is that, okay. Just, I'm thinking about the HVAC expenditure and if it's best practice generally to service four schools and we're doing three, why wouldn't we consider doing the fourth since we have that, those monies available? I think because he was able to do more last year, so it's, it's a cycle. But I'll, I'll have to get that answered because unfortunately Angeles isn't here. So I think we did more last year and so it's, it's over the, like, a lifetime, so I'm not explaining it correctly, but it's.
No, I understand, thank you.
I think the answer to that might be, I think we, we addressed this issue during the budget in terms of what to, what to budget. And there was, there was a cycle, if there was funding to do it earlier, he would take, took advantage of being able to do it earlier.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's part of, he does have a waterfall type plan, like a multi-year plan for it and so we can update you on that in the fall so that you're apprised of, yeah, thank you. Because I know it's really important with HVAC and duct cleaning, especially now, so.
And we talked to, in the Facilities Committee about just seeing the maintenance schedule. Mr. Papa George shared that he had similar to the waterfall for all of these projects that he was doing throughout the district, that we thought that would be something that would be beneficial for the Facilities Committee just to review and get a better understanding of, especially going into budget season. Ms. Kelly. Miss Kerensky, you done? Ms. Kelly.
Just two questions. The first being, Mr. Asa mentioned the $111,000 difference between, I guess that was Monday and today. Can you just, obviously, I see the three lines that it's in, but could you just talk to what those main drivers were?
Sure. So I didn't include all of the IT items and that was my mistake. I should have included all the IT items because they had been processed. So whether they were counted in the Q4 or shown at the spend out, it landed at the same balance. And what I should have done was delineated them as part of the spend out because you hadn't seen that before.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't take a calculator out to add up these numbers, but I'm assuming those, would that add up to the one, the ones, the newer items, is that the difference?
Yes, yeah, I think if I look at the, you know, side by side, I have. Yeah, so we have the 39, 450, the 67, 504 plus the 100 is the 167, 504.
Support expense.
Yeah, the support expense got reclassified. So the full security item is actually in the support expense and what was formerly classified in support expense belonged in maintenance operations and transportation.
Okay. And then unrelated, sorry, I had gone through the old one, I'm not going to bore you with my eight million highlights that I have in here, but just in general, and I apologize for how embarrassing this may question be in showing how uneducated I am on this. But this report, the grant revenue report, if I just skip all the way to the end and I look at the 545, 853 unencumbered balance, what does that mean to me? Is that grant money that we were given that we haven't spent? How was that factored, like, I just don't understand how this ties into the year end number? Or does it not? Like, I, I just, I want to reconcile these two and I don't know if I should be.
I, I think we think alike in a lot of ways, Ms. Kelly, because this, this grant report is another thing I do want to improve and please hold me accountable to that for next year. It's a multi-year report, so if a grant runs over multi-years, you're seeing the unencumbered balance. And I think we need to do a better job showing the annual amounts. It's, it's an accounting thing that we do and the report has worked for past because we didn't typically have multi-year, but because we have the, yeah, the SRR, ARPASR and the SRR2 monies that have multi-year implications. You know, in previous districts have also shown, so for example, the, some portions of the, I think IDEA, you can spend out fif, up to 15% until September, we should show the board that, but I can do that in future. So the answer is it's just a multi-year.
It's fine, I was just trying to reconcile, like, oh, but we had an extra 500 in grants and I didn't know if that was included in the 734 surplus, I didn't, I just want.
It is, yeah, yes.
Any other questions? Was that a, okay.
I apologize if you answered this as I was calculating, but it looked like in the support expense, we had a $92,000 swing, right? And a $67,000 swing and then a $48,000 swing?
Yeah, so here, I'll just, I'll go line by line because I think I did it too quickly. The $39,000 is still within the school expense, so, you know, that was classified appropriately. Within the support expense, that 159, 959, which is attributable to the security, was reclassed because it belonged in, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out which one was the before and which one was the after, this one, okay. So the 159, it belonged in support expense. The 67, 504 that was classified in support expense actually belonged in maintenance operations and transportation. So those two items were reclassed. So the difference, it's easier to see, I think, the difference if you look at the detail down below and you just do the 659, 194 minus the 547, 330. And then if you just look at the detail supporting it, because of the fact that those two items were reclassed.
Okay.
Can I just, can I just clarify? Are you asking, Nick, where the extra money is coming from?
Where, where, where did all this extra money come from? What didn't we spend on to get here? That, what, did we not spend on things that were budgeted to get this extra money?
So you can look at the Q3 to Q4, so that's a good question. So if we go to the enclosure, I think number one, I can go through that report so we can see what was projected as of the Q3 versus present day. In Personnel Services, we originally projected a 1.3 million dollar balance on the top line. That went up to 1.5 between now and then. So that was people not coming back from FMLA and vacancies that we assumed that would come back, that didn't come to fruition. So Personnel Services, a 1.4 million dollar balance became 1.5. On the fixed charges, same reason, the vacancies that we were assuming would uptake on the insurances, didn't uptake on the insurances and so we had an increase on the insurance balance. Pupil personnel went from 2.5 to 2.1 million. That was some adjustments on psych evaluations and there was another psych evaluations and professional expenses. When they looked at the need for the year, they adjusted downward in the Q4 assumptions. And school expenses went up slightly in the balance. Support expenses, we spent out the support expenses. So essentially, what happened that was different, mainly the personnel balance went up a bit and the pupil personnel balance went up as a result of transportation and the, the psych evaluations.
I, I guess if, if I'm understanding you and Chrissy correctly, where did the money come between this one that we got yesterday and this one that we got today? In the, in the, in the three lines for support expense, maintenance, transportation, operation and capital. I should say, so support expense is the number today in the Q4 preliminary is 90-something thousand greater than it was in the, in the original one that we got. The, the one in maintenance, operation, transportation is 60-something greater than and, and capital is $50,000 less than.
So.
So what was the, what was the shift in, in the last 24 to 40? Am I asking that, that's what we wanted?
This was incorrectly classifying the spend out. So the original one incorrectly classified the spend out. So because it was just a, it was a plug, the spend out was a plug because we were producing it quickly, if you back out that number from the Q4 projection, it was wrong. So the change between yesterday and today was a correction in reclassification of those expenses and then also adding in the additional IT items. So it was a schedule I wasn't preparing, like, planning to share, so it wasn't something that we had time to prepare and so there was a mistake in the preparation of it, I shared it too hastily.
All right, I, I guess I hear what you're saying, but if we're talking about reclassification, that's not going to change the gross number. The gross number is $111,000 higher, right?
Matt.
For the Q4 preliminary, yeah.
Yes, and, but if you, and I just did it myself to make myself feel better, the Q4 prelim, old versus new, the difference in that column is the 111 and the difference in the spend out is also 111. So it, it just got shifted from one column over to the other. That's where it was. I was making the assumption that those numbers weren't different, so it just went, now it makes sense to me.
It's beginning to make sense.
It makes sense to me when you say you reclassed it.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense to me why it was reclassed, but it makes sense to me now because I physically, because I'm visual, had to do the subtraction in both columns.
So there was no, there was no newfound money?
Correct, correct. And I think it's a little bit of the challenge that speaks to the point that we'll need to address next year with the policy because I'm a little uncomfortable because normally, normally we would have just spent this out and I'm trying to be transparent because, so for example, HVAC, do I classify that as spend out? Or do I just show it in the projection because it wasn't part of the original budget, but I wanted to make you aware? There, you know, so it's just, we need to resolve that next year when we have a transparent process where you let me know and us know and the superintendent know how you want to approve transfers. Because right now, it happens at year end and it's kind of problematic.
No.
But yeah, thank you for pointing that out, Ms. Kelly, that, that helped me to explain it, what I, it's obvious and not obvious.
Ms. Max Kinnell, did you have your hand up before? Or are you good? All right, seeing no other questions, we will take it to the public. Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. All in favor? Motion carries eight, zero. Okay, moving on. Approval of school nutrition and meal pricing. Ms. Laborius, the Board of Education approved the recommended school lunch prices for the 2022, 2023 school year. Any questions? Ms. Kelly?
Sorry, and I know I touched on this last time, but I'm still, I still walked away with not, without fully understanding. Hopefully, I'll be quicker than I was just before. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what, if any, budget implications this has next year. Because I assume that when we built the budget for next year, we were using old revenue numbers. So what if any impact does using an increased food price or meal price have on next year's budget? Specifically, are we increasing our revenues and if so, by how much?
Okay, that's a really good question. So the bulk of our budget, when we build our budget, we look at the expenses and revenues. The bulk of the revenues come from the federal government for reimbursement for our meals. It's, the sales are a smaller percentage and we did build in a percentage increase in our assumption in hopes that the board would approve the, the proposed increases. We do have a guarantee for, a profit guarantee of. I believe 95,000, is that? Yeah, we have a profit guarantee of 95,000 with a set of assumptions.
What does that mean?
That means that if we were to go into a, a loss, not as a result of a pandemic, that's different, that witnesses agree, it's part of our contract that they would make up that, that loss to the tune of ni, up to $95,000. All of that said, next year is a little bit unpredictable and so part of the reason why we built that in to benchmark ourselves closer to other people in the district is that we're all going to experience some uncertainty with pricing in the upcoming year, potentially, as a result of supply chain issues. So we, and because we've been in free and, the free summer seamless program for the last two years, we just need to be a little, we felt as though we need to be conservative with that so that we can make sure that we keep pace, so that we're not issuing too big of an increase the following year. You know, if we don't keep pace with what our sister districts are doing.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none to the public, seeing no public comment, back. Sorry. Can I have a motion put on the table? Mr. Asa, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Any other discussion? Okay, back to the board for a vote. All in favor? Motion carries eight, zero. Okay, first reading of the revised ed specs for the Roger Ludlow Middle School partial roof replacement. Welcome, Mr. Morabito. Do you want an honest answer?
Sorry to bother you with this minor change. At the Roger Ludlow Middle School project, we're bid out, we have Silk Town Roofing doing our project. We have discovered, site investigations as they're setting up, that there are some low flashing height conditions on the lower roofs that wrap around the auditorium. It's a, one of the roofs is a bump out of the cafeteria and the other is for the entry of the auditorium and the music suite. The windows are very close to the top of the roof. In changing to a different, more durable system, we need more height underneath the window that we don't have. So we may have to switch, it's not definite, but we may have to switch to a single membrane roof. This is similar to what happened over Mill Hill, if you recall, we did change the ed spec. So I use the exact same wording to allow us to do that, if that's what we finally conclude we need to do technically.
We have this on, I'm wondering if we made a mistake in this agenda, this work is being done this summer, correct?
That's correct, it's already started.
So shouldn't we be revising these ed specs now or does it matter? I mean, shouldn't we be voting?
Well, we haven't made a decision, we haven't made a decision yet. It is a pretty straightforward item, you can read it now and take care of it at the next meeting.
Okay.
And we're not definite.
We're not meeting until August, as of right now.
We'll have to deal with it.
Well, I guess to Mrs. Vitale's point, should we make this a one and done and vote on it now?
It would be wonderful if you did, yeah.
I mean, I would support that, I don't know what the procedure is.
Edit. Okay, can I have a motion to add approval of the revised ed specs for Roger Ludlow Middle School partial roof replacement to the agenda? Mr. Asa, seconded by Mr. Peterson. All in favor of adding it as a voting item? Motion carries eight, zero. Okay, so now we are treating this as a voting item. Can I have a motion to?
Just one question?
Yes.
Does this change in any way impact the timing of this project?
No.
Okay, so a motion to. Okay. So, a motion to approve the revised ed specs of the Roger Ludlow Middle School partial roof replacement. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Gernsy. Asa.
Yeah. Mr. Morabito, just out of curiosity, the fact that we had it specified as the cold applied multi-systems, is there any reason that we need to have that wording in there and add the alternate wording in there? Or it doesn't need to be in there at all? I mean, you're the expert with this, especially with reimbursements. But.
We, we bought out the project, so it doesn't need to be in there.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
I was going to ask the same question. Is there any, and I'll just follow up with a different one. Is there any warranty variance in terms of either one of these two?
What we, what we, what we have purchased is a roofing system with a 25-year warranty for state reimbursement requirements. The minimum is 20-year warranty. If we did switch to a single membrane, I would be seeking a 30-year warranty for that single membrane system. Just, just because we could get it.
So, the ed specs are the, are the minimum for the state requirements for reimbursement?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Take it to the public for any public comment. Seeing none, take it back to the board for a vote. Motion carries 8-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morabito.
Good night.
Okay. Approve minutes. Of the Board of Education, approve the June 14, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Can I motion? Ms. Gernsy, second. Mrs. Gerber, any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? All in favor of seven. Ms. Jacobson, Gernsy, Ms. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Ms. Maxicanel, and Mr. Peterson, Ms. Kelly, all opposed. Abstentions? Mr. Asa. Motion carries 8-01. Okay, we took care of the superintendent's report. Unless you have something new to report in the time that we were sitting here?
No, nothing has changed.
Okay. Committee liaison reports? Seeing none. Any open board comment? Well, Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to thank Mr. Cummings for his leadership in this district. And it's been a pleasure to work with him for the past seven years that he's been here. And, you know, he'll be missed. I really respect the work that he's done. And I respect his ability to stay much calmer than I would be if I were in his position. And I think this is really a shame for our district. But I wish him the best.
Thank you, Mrs. Gerber. Mr. Peterson?
I just, I'll, I'll happy to second that. And I'm sure many people are on the table third and, and fourth it. You know, one of the things about, about Mike that has impressed me from the very beginning, if you hear him talk at any length about, about academics, about children, he calls it the work. And I've always imagined that to be capitalized. He speaks about it reverently. And, and that's something that's always, always impressed me. And, and I've been very grateful to work with somebody who's always tried to think students first and in that, in that kind of sanctity. And I've always really appreciated that. And I wish you, I wish you all the best.
Anyone else? Mike, I'm going to miss you. I'm just going to say it. I'm going to miss you. I, you know, it's been a pleasure working with you. We've been very, very lucky to have you these seven years. I, these past three years, you've just been in, really in crisis mode, dealing with one crisis after the other. And as I've said it before, I wish that we had some time really to move the work forward together as a board and not a crisis mode. But I wish you nothing, nothing but the best in your future ventures, whether it be, you know, part-time in another district, or at home with your family, or raising chickens. I mean, I had a very nice conversation with your daughter. But we were very, very grateful for your leadership. And I'll see you tomorrow. You don't have to open it now. Just a little memory of us.
I just, I just want to say, it's not, it's not board comment, I know.
If you want it. If you want a memory of us.
I just want to, you know, the, these, you know, it was 29 years in a district and doing a lot of different work in that district with a lot of great people. And then coming to a district that was totally brand-new to me and really finding what I didn't think was possible, which was the second home. And, and I really appreciate the opportunity to work with all of you. I, and the staff here and, and in the service of the kids and the families. So, I so much appreciate the opportunities that Dave Title and Tony Jones and you have given me. They've just helped me to grow and to stay involved and to feel, to, as much as I can, to feel rewarded. I regret that, that the last three years really took a lot of momentum out of, out of the work. But the work still awaits you. And I have full confidence in your ability to take and have those expectations for the people who follow me. So, thank you.
Okay. Take it to the public. Any public comment? Still none. Okay. And with that, motion to adjourn. Ms. Maxicanel, you don't want to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Ms. Jacobson, seconded by Ms. Gernsy. All in favor? Motion carries 8-0. Guys, just don't go anywhere yet.